For joining us this morning for our city council work session, we'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the rule?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Bangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Vlad. Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item two is Construction Board of Appeals and Review Update. Representatives from the Construction Board of Appeals and Review will discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Richard Bigelow, building official for the city of Pocatello. Just wanted to give you guys an update on the Construction Board of Appeals and kind of what we do and that. In the five years that I've been here, we've only met twice, which is actually a good thing for a board. That means that the builders are building their buildings to the code and they agree with the decisions that the inspectors and myself are making out in the field for changes that need to happen to make the buildings code compliant. We have six members on our board and we have one vacancy. We've had a vacancy for quite a while. It's for an architect. We're just having a hard time filling it. So it's been over a year since we've had that vacancy on our board. But again, we don't meet that often, which is a good thing. So for the new council members, kind of let you know what the Building Code Board of Appeals does is it's a buffer between the board and the council. So when we make a decision, someone doesn't like it, they submit in writing that they want to go before the Construction Co-Board of Appeals. And the members of the board are representatives of the trade. So we have somebody from plumbing, electrical, building, fire, architectural and engineer. Then they make up our board. And they can't waive the code requirements, but they just hear what they have to say and make sure that as code officials that we're interpreting the code correctly. So like again, they don't have the right to say, oh, you know, we agree with you. You don't have to follow the rules on this one. It's just no, we are interpreting the code correctly or not. So that's the reason behind it. And then if they don't like the decision of the board, then they can appeal it before city council. And then if they don't like that, then they can appeal it to the courts. So that's the purpose and the reasoning behind it. And I'm just glad that we've only met twice.
Super.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bigelow, there've been discussions about the new building codes. Is there any particular concerns that you would have with what might be coming?
No, not really. I mean, the state of Idaho is talking about going to, I believe it's either a five or six-year code cycle instead of a three that we're currently on. I think it has to do with mainly for costs and for builders. But really, if we look at the codes, in my opinion, it's very, the changes aren't that big. They're very small for the most part. And a lot of times, they delete stuff from the code. So I really don't have a thing. I know energy code has always been a big topic, trying to get rid of the energy code. And we just keep sneaking by on having it. I personally believe in the energy code. I think it helps. I think with, you know, everything else going up, that if we are, you know, using the right windows and insulation, that it helps keep our fuel costs down to heat our homes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Super, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
We'll move to agenda item number three is Sister City Foundation of Pocatello. Members of Sister City's Foundation of Pocatello will be in attendance to discuss the foundation's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dana Olson, and I'm the chair of that foundation. But more importantly, the organization that's under that foundation is the Pocatello Sister Cities of Africa. And for those of you that are new to the board, some of you already heard this before, we have a village in Burkina Faso, Africa, it's called Queremengill. And it's really close to the Mali border. It's kind of like going out on the Arco Desert through the dirt out to village. It's a remote subsistence area. This area has been...
But it's a lot harder to get to than going through the Arco Desert.
Yeah, especially if you're with Noel, and he has to stop everywhere to introduce you to everybody that you meet. Yeah. So yeah, that's true, Mayor Vlad, is that during the rainy season, the area is inaccessible. And most of the people don't have cars. They might have a motorcycle. There's a group that have camels, bicycles, you know, things like that. So it's a really, really remote area, but a very, very, very good, you know, fun village that we work with. So for those of you that don't follow the politics and stuff in Burkina Faso, we finally have a president that's really helping and moving things forward. There are some insurgents that keep coming into the country, and sometimes it's okay, you know, and sometimes it's not okay. And basically, those insurgents within the village have pretty much got rid of all education. And that's been one of our big things is education. We have built a primary school, three classrooms, and then helped with a secondary school with teacher housing and stuff like that. Currently, all the housing in the village is closed. But we have a village in Tugon, which is, actually does have a paved highway to it, that we have purchased some land. We have a small building on it so the students can go there. And we have just sent over $1,500 more dollars to help them to fence off that land so we get to keep it. Because they don't have surveyors and stuff like us necessarily. And so people kind of start moving in on that property. So we're trying to fence that property. And once we fence it, then they can start having their gardens and stuff like that on this property. We're hoping that eventually the schools back in Queremengill will open because they have the primary school, the junior high, and they were going to start kind of a low-level high school, but that's been out of the thing. So it's kind of a, it's just a heartfelt project for me, just because I've been to the village, and it was the most amazing welcome I've ever had in my life. And, you know, we still have, there's some students that have actually come to the US that they've gotten themselves here. Our group will not pay for people to come here because we figured the money needs to stay in the country and support those. There are people in town that support those individuals, but it's not through the foundation. So we feel like we're doing some fun things. And our big next project that we're trying to do is get the alternative gift market back up and running because that's been something that's kind of gone. So we're working with the churches and things like that. And then trying to see if Sister Cities Africa can actually do, you know, a little bit more of the gift part of it, you know, and still have the other organizations there. So we're in communication. So it hasn't been approved yet, but that hasn't been around for a couple of years now. And I know there's a group of people that would like to help get that back going. So that's kind of our big project, besides some crafts. So any questions?
Let's go with Councilmember Nichols, then Councilmember Cheatham.
Do you periodically take delegations there?
No, we don't. Just because the money that we, we've gone twice. Right now, Noel doesn't want us to come because he doesn't know if he can protect us. So if we do that, it would have to be funding that the people would pay for because all the money that we do goes directly to the village to help them with projects. And so, but we haven't recently. But the reason we haven't gone recently is because Noel doesn't want us to come.
Right.
And I'm okay with that.
We don't hear a lot about our African sister city like we hear about the Japanese sister city because we have two of them. And one of them is a cultural and one of them is humanitarian. And the cultural, they send people here and we make a big deal of it. And we don't have that privilege of being able to get people from there, from Africa to here and/or make that trip to there as well, as often.
So to get somebody from Africa to come here, for them to even like get a passport or any kind of papers because they feel like if they leave, that they won't want to come back, you know. So to even, you know, support Josh, when he came over, it was, I mean, it was a major project for him to be able to come. And then he tried to get his, you know, girlfriend over here, you know, and it's impossible. I mean, it's not like we just get a passport and go where we want to go. They don't have those privileges within the country. Plus, even trying to come here, they're questioned.
Right. Thank you. Rick?
Dana, can you give us a rough idea of the population of both the country and the city?
The country, I'm not sure. Our village is probably around 4,000 people. But it's a small village, but it has a lot of outlying villages all around it. So it's actually, for its part, is sort of the central place where the market actually comes to the village, you know, once a week, where, you know, people come and sell wares. They can get, you know, their meat, charge their cell phones if they don't have, because there's no power. They don't have, they don't have electricity where they can plug in. You know, there's a few places that have enough power that they can have their own solar stuff. But it's, yeah, subsistence, cook on wood. They don't, you know, dirt floors, you know, pound your own millet. You know, it's an amazing place to go and experience. But it does, it's basically the central location for the area. But it's about 4,000 people.
Don't they have running water?
Yeah.
In fact, that was one of the projects that you worked on.
Yeah, we've done water where it's, we have actually, so some of them are just put a bucket on a thing and then dip it down. We actually have one hand crank pump that they can get water. The gardens are fenced to keep the cows and the pigs out. So the cows and the pigs get to go wherever they want to, you know. And so it's just, it's, and so there's like two women's cooperatives. So we've built two fenced gardens for the two women's cooperatives. And so, well, just some of the other projects, I probably thank you, you're leading me in a good direction. I appreciate that. And so some of the other projects is we have a small business loan that people can come in, you know, borrow money. They have to pay it back and pay a little bit of interest. And it could be to buy a goat. It could be to buy a trailer. It could be to buy, so their small business loans are small business loans just to help them. And that whole thing has grown. We've sent a couple different funds over just to kind of help build that up because it's getting used so much. We do pay for kids to be able to go to school. So we have a school program, you know, we get $295 and that pays for, you know, the kids to be able to go to school and do it. And at this point, all the kids are not in the village. Kids can't even go home because insurgents will know that they have been at school. I mean, it's a very, you know, disruptive thing. And that's why we're trying to build a center in Tugon so that the kids can actually, you know, have a place. They can have a place that they can stay. But that's what's so cool about this village is all these kids are someplace in the country with another family, other people that are helping them. And I think that's the part that amazes me is that the education and the things like that has not stopped. They're still able to do this, you know, kids are still being able to go to college, still being able to do things. It's just not in their village, or our village. It's both of our villages.
That's right. Okay. Well, I think Dana didn't think I was listening, it sounds like. But I've been listening to what she said.
No, you have been listening, yes. And there's the reminders because I just, you know, yeah.
No, it's neat to see what we've been able to accomplish from Pocatello, what you've done and the group has done. It's just, it's a passion of love for sure, so.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. And I'm going to go back and I'll invite you.
Oh, please.
As soon as we get the okay, because we'd like to actually do a medical mission over there because the dispensary is also closed. We actually have a dispensary where we bought some solar panels so they could have power to have a refrigerator to put their medicine in. You know, it's just things like that that are, you know, we're just so used to being able to do that, you know, definitely challenges over there. And so we hope we can get everything back up to what it was before and better. When the insurgents finally decide that they don't need to tell everybody that they can't have educations and whatever else they think that people shouldn't do.
Yeah. Okay, super. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item four is the Library Board. Representatives from the Library Board will be present to discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning, council members and mayor. My name is Sandy Shropshire. I am the chair of the Board of the Marshall Public Library. And I'm happy to be here this morning. I'm sending around sort of a data sheet of activities since the last time I was here a year ago that you might find to be of interest. I'd like to draw your attention to a few things on this list. And that is some physical changes to the library or soon to be coming to the library, just to be aware of. You may be aware of the Ashcroft and Yost Family Exploration Center that was installed into an area in the library that is now outfitted with children's furniture and science exploratory toys, I guess I would call them. And it's a very, it's a very nice and friendly area for children. Another physical change that is coming is the installation of the elevator, which has been keeping the staff getting their steps because they have no other way to get upstairs and return books that have been checked out. One other change that we will be talking about shortly in the library community is the implementation of House Bill 710A.
A. 710A.
Excuse me, 710A, which goes into effect July 1. And this is the legislation that was passed and signed by Governor...
Little.
I wanted to say Otter, but no. Governor Little, which says that gives citizens the right to request that a book that they find to be inappropriately shelved in the children's area to be moved to an adults-only Or, and has the right to civil penalty if that is failed, does not happen. Did I characterize that okay? Libraries are preparing and consulting with their respective legal counsel for the best way to respond and to be ready on July 1. Essentially, they will be needing to come up with a policy, coming up with a form that can be used, an instrument for the citizenry to use, and will most likely need to allow for a physical space that is restricted to adults only. If that, and some libraries I know will be challenged to make that physical space available. I don't anticipate that will be a problem in this library that we're talking about. So I will stand for any questions. I would like to point out that the stats are unequal to periods of time because of just a delay in getting April statistics. So if you're comparing, it doesn't look good. But realize that the current year is a five-month period rather than a six-month period. However, the ebook checkouts are already breaking prediction. And I will say that the ebooks question with regard to House Bill 710A has not been clear at all. How that is to be implemented is currently unknown.
Sounds like they focus mostly on the...
Print books.
The printed books. Okay. Councilmember Nichols had a question?
Yeah, I do have a question on that Bill 710A. So walk me through how this works. Somebody objects to a book. They tell you, I object to this book. Are you then obligated to put it in an adult section? Is there any type of a review process or anything, or just any book anybody happens to object to goes in the adult section?
There's a, that's the very question that we're sorting out at the moment. There's, ideally, there's a form someone must fill out and indicate specifically why they object to the book's placement in the children's section. The form goes to members of the library staff, if I'm not mistaken, and Councilmember Cheatham, you can, for review. And should the review result in an agreement of that decision, then yes, it will go into this other section. If the reviewers feel that that is not to be done, they face the prospect of a $250 civil fine. That's my best understanding of this.
Eric, did you?
She explained it well. Mayor, Council, Eric Cease, the library director. She's essentially given the information that's necessary. The legislation requires us to create two things. One is a form, one is a policy. And we are going to actually create a separate form and policy than our normal reconsideration process because the process is different. Normally, we would go through in a reconsideration, you know, which is a policy we've had for years in place. The reconsideration would go through a group of library employees. It could be appealed to me if they disagree with the decision. And then from me, it would go to the library board to determine whether we followed the policy correctly. The legislation asks for a different process, and that would be directly when the form is, if somebody chooses to feel that something is harmful to minors based on their understanding of the legislation, it would go, after the form is completed, directly to the library board to determine whether it fits, in their opinion, into that category of harmful to minors based on the way that the legislation is written. We're not, this is not fleshed out. We're still in the process of putting together that policy and putting together that form so that we'll have it in place by July 1. And we will make sure that we follow all, you know, law as stated. It is possible, and I'm going to give a spurious example, but if somebody, for example, said, I want Moana Pu to go into that section because he's not wearing pants. It could go to the library board, and the library board could say, that's ridiculous, we're not going to do that, and would choose not to do that in that particular case, or could. If the complainant feels that the library board, who has chosen not to put something in that section based on the form that they filled out, if they feel that, yes, it's still, in their opinion, is harmful to minors, they can take that to court. I'm not sure exactly which court it would go through, magistrate court or which court is there. It's not clear at this point. They could take it to court, and court, if it found that in fact, the material was harmful to minors, they could levy a fine.
No, it's not accurate. The court doesn't make that determination. The court simply reviews the process to see whether it's been followed or not.
Okay.
The court doesn't make a determination of pornography.
Okay, perfect. That's where we go. Thank you. I wasn't, that wasn't clear. And that's one of the things we're trying to figure out. There's language in there that even our city attorney is not quite clear on. And so we need to determine those kind of things.
It sounds like the intent was that court follows, looks and sees if the process was followed correctly.
Correct. It's a review of process. And that's why, that's why writing the process that Eric's talking about is so important, to make sure that either the library board or a designated board, whoever they decide to designate, reviews this, examines it, makes a determination of whether it is in an age-appropriate portion of the library.
And then the court determines whether the process was followed correctly.
Exactly. Okay.
So anyway, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. And so, you know, there may be no challenges to any of our material, or there may be a number of challenges. We don't know. And we're not going to pre-populate that area with material we think could be challenged. We will wait until there are challenges. And if there are any challenges, we'll go through the process that we've done. And that, both the form and the policy will be heavily reviewed by our city attorney. And each location can have the advice of their own attorney to determine what they feel they're willing to support and how they interpret things. There are things that are up into interpretation. For example, they talk about if a minor, if a minor has to obtain the material. The definition of obtain is not clear. It could mean that they've checked it out. It could also mean that they've picked the book off the shelf and looked at it. It's not clear what the word obtained means. And so I think it'll probably take some legal interpretation as it goes through various challenges to determine what the definitions truly mean. Because there's some ambiguity as to what the language intends. And so that will go through the process over the course of time throughout the state as this legislation gets implemented and worked through.
So, okay. Councilmember Mansfield?
We currently reclassify books that we feel are, that due to a challenge are deemed inappropriate. For example, they could be in like the teen graphic novel section and then move to the adult.
Sure.
Right. Is, how do you foresee this bill changing that reclassification process for materials that are deemed harmful to minors?
I think we're going to separate the process into two different kinds of processes. I think if somebody brings us a complaint based on this legislation that says something is harmful to minors specifically, we will use the process that is based on this legislation. If somebody says, I think this material should be moved to, you know, from children's to teens, or teens to adults, or, you know, whatever section. And I want to distinguish between adult and adult. You know, our adult section is a pretty large section of our library. That just means the material is of higher research value or, you know...
Reading level.
Reading level, that kind of thing. So, but anyway, if somebody just says, I want it removed from the library, or I want it moved to a different section, we'll use the policy that we've had in place for decades. If somebody is specifically challenging something that they feel is harmful to minors, based on the legislation that was just passed, we'll use that process. And that's, and again, this hasn't been fleshed out yet. We're in the process of determining how that works. But that is at least what is being considered at this point.
Other questions, council?
Just one. In the past, how often has literature or anything in the library been challenged? It's not been often, has it?
Two or three times in 10 years, is what I thought.
And we've moved the children's to a specific location at the library.
We have separated the youth, the YA, the children's and the adult sections upstairs as part of that process. And Sandy talks about it in the list here. But we took a pretty significant amount of work to separate those sections so that they're more, you know, that you're not intermingled.
Yeah. Okay. Brent?
How's your elevator coming along?
Yeah, as she mentioned.
It's coming in June. It's currently set to be installed in June.
They had talked about March. They moved it up to June, and everything seems to be on schedule to be put in place next month.
Okay, thank you.
Good. That'll be nice. Any other questions? Super, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item five of Rafftelis Utility Rate Study. Representatives from Rafftelis will be present to review the development of a multi-year financial plan, cost of service and proposed utility rates for the city of Pocatello for fiscal year '25 through fiscal year '29.
Imagine I can just pause this.
And this starts.
Can I do this?
Here.
Let's see if...
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. I'm joined with Todd Christiano from Rafftelis. I'm joined with Todd Christiano from Rafftelis. The last few months, we've been working hard on a financial plan and a rate study for the three utilities, water, wastewater and sanitation. And so Todd's here to run through that with you. And we've got Kerry, Justin and Levi also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor Glad, members of council, good morning. It's a pleasure to be back in Pocatello, Idaho. I have some extended family here in Pocatello as well as Preston. So it's always nice to come back. I am with Rafftelis Financial Consultants. We're a financial consulting firm with offices across the U.S. And I've had the opportunity over the past 20 years to, off and on, to work with the city. And it's obviously a pleasure to work on this study as well. Today's presentation is going to give you an overview of the rate study that we conducted for the water, wastewater and sanitation utilities. We do this every five years. And it's just to make sure we're maintaining the financial health and sustainability of each utility. Our agenda today, we'll talk about our goals and objectives of the study, the rate study process, water and wastewater results, our bill comparison, our sanitation utility results, and we'll talk about water and wastewater capacity fees. So it's a delicate balancing act that each utility needs to play each year when funding projects, funding O&amp;M and maintaining the health of the system. And we have to do that through funding our operations, funding our capital projects. We have to maintain reserves. We have to fund our growth. And we have to ensure our cost recovery. We want to make sure that we're recovering our costs through our rates and charges each year to ensure that we can pay the bills. And the way we do this is doing a financial plan and looking at cost of service and developing our rates to recover our costs. And obviously with water and wastewater, looking at capacity fees to recover the cost of new connectors coming on to the system. Now, we've all heard about inflation the past couple of years. Pre-COVID, things have kind of been a bit up and down, mainly up with inflation. The chart you see here has two lines on it. The dark solid line, blue or black, whatever color showing up there, that represents the Consumer Price Index, CPI. You may have heard, basically, an inflation index over the past couple of years. So here, it shows it from 1986 to 2024. The red dotted line is a subset of the CPI because the CPI is a basket of many goods, everything from diapers to chicken. And what's included in there, too, is water and sewer bills. And over the years, this red dotted line has departed or diverged considerably from the basic CPI. So what we're seeing here is that the cost of water and wastewater services, and not to mention sanitation, have increased dramatically over the past couple of years. And it's not just in one area of the country, in specific areas where utilities are not being run well. Even the best-run utilities are seeing the impacts of this. And it's no different than the same pressures that Pocatello faces for their utilities. And we're happy to say that our inflation, our revenue adjustments aren't looking like that in our results, which is good. But to maintain a water and wastewater utility and provide safe, clean, reliable drinking water and wastewater service is becoming more expensive. So in our rate-
Before we move on-
I'm sorry, yes.
If I may, what would it contribute to the disproportionate increase of inflation in water and sewer services? Is it because fuel is excluded from the CPI typically? And that's rolled into that?
Well, this one doesn't, this CPI does include the fuel.
It does.
But here's, it's a great question. Here's the thing. There's a bit of history. Back in the 70s, the EPA funded a lot of water and wastewater utility construction, provided federal grants for that. Now, wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plants and large facilities have typical lives of around 30 to 40 years. Well, we're at that point where a lot of those facilities are needing to be replaced. And utilities haven't stayed up with inflation. Not only that, but they have to maintain their distribution system or their collection system. So that's part of it. That's probably a huge driver, is a lot of those large utilities got free money back in the 70s with Clean Water Act and Clean Drinking Water Act. No more. And so there's a lot of more unfunded mandates. There's a lot more regulatory requirements that wastewater, I'm sure Levi has seen that, needs to be met, Frost First being one of them. And there's several others, water, and I'm sure on sanitation as well. So that's probably the part of the reason of bifurcation, but also just technology costs money to maintain those regulatory requirements and keep the plants running for even having a longer lifespan. So the rate study process for us is about four steps. We've got a financial plan. It's basically a cash flow, in and out. Money in, money coming out. Cost of service, basically, is every customer class paying their fair share. And when I'm being by customer class, I mean residential customers, commercial customers, industrial, that sort of thing. Rate design, how are we getting the money from the customers? And there's a number of ways we can do that. And there's not one prescribed way. But really, it's about the community objectives. What community objectives go into how we recover our costs? If you think about it, usually a water utility has a fixed charge and a volumetric charge. Well, we could have set up a rate structure that's all fixed charge, charge every customer X number of dollars. You can use as much water as you want. Well, that may not meet conservation goals. And also, a high fixed charge might place some burden on some lower-income folks. So there's a number of ways we can recover the charges. I'll go over the rate structures we have in a few moments. And finally, capacity fees. Capacity fees are a way to recover the cost of facilities to be constructed to serve new development and serve existing customers as well. Because we know that there's existing capacity in our facilities here today, in the city, in the water and wastewater facilities. That means that somebody way in the past helped build an oversized facility. Okay? And with new customers coming in, they have to kind of reimburse those customers, not physically send them a check, but they want to reimburse the utility for those customers having foresight to say, "We need to build a facility that can serve new development." And they're willing to take on that burden and to get recouped in the future. So those are capacity fees. Not to be confused with impact fees, which are a little different process, requires voting and that sort of thing. So these are our capacity fees, and they're more historical-looking. What we do here, Rafftelis didn't make up the principles of what we do here with developing a rate study, although we have a number of people in the industry that help form those principles. But there's a number of manuals out there, manuals of practice, that are kind of the go-to books that if you have to testify, you hold up the book and say, "Hey, we follow these principles here." It's all about cost allocation and making sure that cost proportionality between the various customer classes. Customers pay for the services they need based on how they place demands on the system. So let's start with our financial plan. That's step number one. As with any... Well, maybe it's not working anymore. That's odd.
I can hit it if you'd like. It's about as good as I'm-
Well, we might have to get to use our imagination here today. Okay, well, let's see here. Wait for that to come back up. I can go to paper. I imagine you'll have a copy there as well. Do you? Okay, well, we're going to do this old-school style, I guess, until we find out what's going on here. I apologize for that. Not a problem, though. So the financial plan process, I'm on this slide here. There's a number of steps we go through here with the financial plan process. Obviously, we have to look at our rate revenues, the money coming in, maybe loans and grants that are available to us. And we obviously have our expenditures, O&amp;M, capital, debt service and repair and replacement projects. And that's all kind of focused around certain reserve policies that we have and financial metrics that we have in terms of, we have certain reserve levels that we want to meet and certain reserve policies that we have set to maintain a positive fund balance, as well as our debt service coverage ratios for the utilities that have debt. A debt service coverage ratio is similar to the debt-to-income ratio. It's just the inverse of that. When you go buy a house, the debt-to-income ratio, they want to make sure. Us, it's just like you would do your home finances. You're going to look at your projection of your revenues and funding coming in, your expenses. And the big issue is, how do we, what are we trying to achieve? We have to stay under this umbrella of certain policies and practices. And that's really the financial policies you have of operating in capital reserves and debt service coverage for those utilities that have it. So that's our multi-year financial plan. So this is an iterative process. It's not just one and done. It's, it sounds fairly easy, but we're moving capital projects around. There's certain changes in O&amp;M. You want to balance your revenue adjustments to be as uniform as possible. And that has been the goal of each study is, you know, how can we maintain equal annual revenue adjustments rather than having a 30% increase one year and a negative 5% the next year? Those aren't the projections we're suggesting, but just as an example. So for the purposes of this study, we've separated out the funds. If you think about the water utility, the wastewater utility and sanitation utility, we've taken those funds. They're all one big fund. Each utility has their own fund. We've broken it out into two separate sub-cash flows. And that's just a way for us to determine what needs to be recovered from rates and what needs to be recovered maybe from capacity fees or what grants would fund. Obviously, you don't want to use grants to fund O&amp;M and that sorts of things. So we break it out into two funds called the operating sub-fund and a capital sub-fund. So what you'll see in the operating sub-fund are those costs associated with day-to-day operations, our rate revenues, miscellaneous operating revenues, like hydrant revenue, turn-on-turnoff penalties and some raw water lease revenue, at least on the water side. Our O&amp;M expenses each year, that's just salaries, wages, materials, supplies and that sort of thing, existing and proposed debt service, if there is any. And any sort of transfers to the capital fund to help the capital fund make its annual capital fund payments to the extent that grants, loans or capacity fees cannot do so. We know that growth is intermittent, and sometimes there may not be any growth. But yet you still might have capital projects need to be funded. Well, the money's got to come from somewhere. It comes from rates. On the flip side, the capital fund watches, looks at capacity fee revenues, transfers from the operating fund, future bonds and loans, and obviously the capital projects. So that's how we have these two buckets of looking at the cash flow. That way, we know that rate revenues are funding this. We can also determine, well, how much of rate revenues are funding capital that can't be funded from capacity fees? By combining everything into one fund, it makes it a little bit more murky. Let's take a step back and look at the utilities at a higher level as we get into the rest of this here. When we think about the water utility, it's out of sight, out of mind, much like wastewater. Just to give some perspective here to those listening as well, that the city has 291 miles of water mains, deliver about 13 million gallons of water daily. You have 16 storage tanks, 2,700 fire hydrants, and you serve about 19,000 customers. And those all have 19,000 meters as well. So the amount of effort that goes in to maintain the system on a daily basis is pretty enormous. And it's very similar on the wastewater side, too. 277 miles of sewer mains and 5,000 manholes, 7.5 million gallons of wastewater treated daily. The delta between the 13 and 7.5, we could assume is irrigation or water that's not returning to the wastewater system, and about 19,000 customers as well. Sanitation is one of those things that you can see. You see the trucks driving. You see the people putting the trash in and all the efforts that go on there. But we want to highlight that although these are just trucks driving around, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. 51,000 tons of municipal solid waste collected annually. That's quite a bit. 2,000 tons of recycled material is collected and 830 tons of yard waste collected annually. And they do that on a daily basis.
Okay, yes.
Before we move past that page, can we talk about this for a second?
Sure.
How is it that we have less sewer mains than we have water mains? Where's that other 14 miles of water going?
It might be because you are serving Chubbick as a wholesale customer.
I think, if I may, probably the Johnny Creek area where they're on Septics up there.
So we deliver water, but they treat it?
Correct.
After, does the 2,000 tons of solid stream or single-stream recyclable material included in the 51,000? Or is that in excess?
That's separate, yep.
Wow, almost a ton per person.
Yep. Pretty amazing, isn't it?
That's overwhelming.
Yeah, and if I could chime in, Justin, our groundwater superintendent. Some of the reason for that is we've got longer transmission lines and other things that are serving the hillsides. And so it's not just, you know, water under every street or things like that. We're actually, you know, conveying to various pressure zones or transferring water from one point to another. So there's going to be differences between your sewer system and your water system.
So those aren't necessarily delivering to a retail customer who would then need to put it back in this? Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Brent? I'd like to follow up on Rick's comment about the 51,000 tons of trash. So how does the trash and the water usage in Pocatello compare to, you know, other states? I mean, are we using more or less?
Yeah, I don't think we made any comparisons on that with other states. But we could probably get that information if you'd like. We could get that to you.
Other states or other cities?
Either other cities or states, or just generally, how are we comparing to others?
We compared in this study, you'll see coming up, we compared what our rates were, but we didn't really look at the quantities that they do. If that's something that the council's interested in, then we could definitely put that together and get it to you.
I'd be curious to see a per capita comparison.
Okay. We can put something together on our side for that.
Thank you.
On the water and sewer side, there are metrics in terms of dollars per million, dollars per million gallons per day overall and how much is treated versus the number of employees you have versus miles of mains. Of course, there's always these unique circumstances. Every utility is so different. But those are something that are fairly available that we can provide to you and staff as well, if that's of interest.
Are these numbers the last fiscal year, current fiscal year, five-year average, a spot shot? What are they?
Yeah, it's a fiscal year snapshot.
Of '23, then?
Yes.
So I know you've had a high incidence of construction waste in the last year. How is, which one of these numbers is that included in?
That would be the top part, the 51,000.
The 51,000. Is there any breakout of that versus household waste?
Absolutely. We can break it down very aggregated and we can tell you how much is curbside, how much is a dumpster like behind a convenience store. We can tell you how much is a roll-off, which is normally the larger construction to return things. We can get all that information for you if you'd like to see it.
I may be a nerd, a number nerd, but I'd find it interesting.
Okay, yeah, we'll put together something.
Thank you.
So a lot of efforts to maintain these utilities and ensure that we're providing safe service to all customers. Let's start with the water utility. I have a couple of assumptions here, inflation and growth factors. Really, the biggest inflationary factors are benefits and whatnot. A large portion of the O&amp;M expenses are our staff, are the, to maintain and operate the system. We just saw how large the systems are, expansive, and it takes a lot of staff to do that. We have some reserve targets and debt service coverage. Our operating reserve is equal to 90 days of O&amp;M, which means we've just taken your annual operations expenses divided by 365 times 90 days. Very typical in the water industry of using 90 days. And the way that came about is in the olden times, when we issued invoice from the day the cost was incurred to the day the invoice was issued and was paid, it was about 90 days. So that's kind of where that came from. We have a repair and capital reserve of $5 million annually. And you'll see that the capital reserve varies by utility. It's just based on the nature of the utility and what staff decided is an appropriate level for each utility. Many utilities don't even have capital reserves. They rely on operating reserves here only. They don't have a capital reserve, haven't thought about it. But here, we at least have capital reserves in our utilities here. Debt service coverage is 1.2 times debt service payments. And that's fairly typical for the types of loans that we have here. So our rate revenue adjustment strategy is the same for water utility as it is wastewater and sanitation. We want to fund operations through rate revenues, obviously. We don't want to be issuing loans. We don't be using a credit card to pay for operations. We want to maintain debt service coverage levels and reserve levels. That's very important, that minimum level in the bank. If we need to tap into that, we'll have that available to us. Minimize rate shock through uniform rate increases. We've done that for the past 20 years. Like I mentioned, we wanted, we don't want to have that variability. So 2% for every five years or three, or whatever the number is. Trying to maintain that. And it helps with expectations, and nobody likes surprises like that. So let's take a look at capital funding here. I've got a bar chart. The bar chart has colors on both sides. So what we're trying to show here is, here's the levels of expenditures in capital on the left side. You can see we have all different colors here. We have R and R means repair and replacement capital. And what we've done for the water utility was broken out this capital improvement program, or CIP, into the various components here. We have some new facilities that we're building. We have some vehicles that we're purchasing. And we also have debt service that we're paying. So a total of $31.1 million of capital expenditures million of capital expenditures that we're going to be making payments on. Where are we getting this money from? That comes from transfers from the operating fund primarily, which is okay, and we're also getting about $4.1 million in capacity fee revenue, just based on your current capacity fee rates and the current growth you're expecting in the city, which is about 0.5, half percent to 1%. So, what we're just trying to show here is how these capital projects are being funded. Let's look at the operating metrics, a little bit different graph here. This is a five-year graph, and what we're looking at here is a difference between revenues and expenditures. The solid line and the dotted line are revenues. The dotted line R is revenues if we didn't have our revenue adjustments for the five-year period. The bars represent the expenditures that we're making. We have the O and M expense that transfers out to the capital fund and our, any sort of repair and replacement capital that we are keeping in the operating fund. So, you can see that with the dotted line, if we didn't have any revenue adjustments at all, our revenues would be below our expenditures, which means that we'd be drawing down our reserves, potentially going negative into our reserve balance. With the revenue adjustments we're proposing, the orange or amber colored line there shows that our revenues are staying at a level to meet our annual expenditures. Now, you'll notice that the line is just about equal to the expenditures, and was that coincidental or deliberate? Well, what we try to do is, to the extent there's funds above our revenue targets, or there are funds above meeting our expenditures, we'll transfer that to the capital fund to help fund capital improvements and maintain a balance in there. So, it's not happenstance. We set it up that way. So, let's take a look at our ending fund balance. The bar there is our target reserves, the line, black line, and then we have two different types of reserves. We have the operating and capital, so we're kind of showing the combined reserves you have here. And over the course of the five years, we're drawing down and building up the reserves. You can see in 2029, we've drawn down the reserves a little bit, but still ahead of our target reserves to meet all of our capital projects. So, we're still set up well for the next five years. That's one thing we want to be considerate of, is we don't want to operate in a vacuum and say, well, at the end of the five years, let's deplete all of our reserves and keep our rate increases down. Well, in year six, you're going to have a problem. So, we try to set it up to where that, beginning in the next five years, you're positioned to say, okay, have we maximized the use of our funding by keeping rates low, but still can go to the year six through 10 now and still maintain lower costs and be able to fund the projects that we need. So, here's a summary for the people like, folks who like to look at the tabular or numbers here. 4% in fiscal '25 and '26, followed by 3.5. You notice, we talked about smooth and predictable. We try to keep it at the 3.5 all the way across, but we really had some expenditures upfront, so we have that additional 0.5% in '25 and '26 kind of give us a little bit of momentum to maintain lower increases in fiscal year '29. That second row there shows the cumulative rate increase. You can see it goes from 4 to 8.2. It might look like it should be 8%, but this is cumulative. We're multiplying the percentages on top of each other each year, and that's the cumulative impact. Our ending fund balance is $10.2 million in fiscal year '25. It drops to 9.5, but we're still above our targets. So, we're still doing well, and obviously, our debt service coverage is more than ample. It says NA in fiscal year '29. That's because the debt will be paid off by the end of fiscal year '28. So, at the end of the day, with a revenue adjustment of 4% for fiscal year '25 and '26, followed by 3.5% revenue adjustments, we're maintaining all those reserve targets and debt service coverage and maintaining that minimizing rate shock and smooth and predictable revenue adjustments. And these are certainly lower than inflation numbers we've seen elsewhere for other goods and services, not only governmental, but obviously, in the rural world, too.
Councilmember Mansfield, and then Councilmember Cheatham.
Can you remind me what the rate increases were in our previous five years, like the one that we're currently in, from 2019 to 2024?
Don't quote me on this, but it was around the same, about 3.5 or 4 or 5. It was under 5.
Percentage was pretty level, then, from this past rate study to the one that we're moving into?
Yeah, it was very similar. I believe the first three years and the last study were around 4%, and then it went to a 3% the last two years.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, is there a capital project planned in '29 that's going to pull those numbers down so much, or is there, what's the...
Yes, there's a, I believe there's a larger capital project towards the end. I'd have to go back and double check, but that is, it's not O and M expenses that's drawing it down. It's capital, for sure. And, you know, of course, capital projects move, so it might get pushed up to 28 or pushed off to 30, but either way, you've got the funds to fund those projects.
Yeah, there wasn't necessarily a project in particular. The things that we looked at for 2029 were a South Valley booster. That's to supply if there's any development on the south side, on the south end of town as part of that annexation and things like that. We've also got some contingencies for any new well development. As our wells are getting older, a lot of those were developed in the 1920s and through 1950s, and so, you know, we've already seen some failures. Well 2 is kind of an example of that with, you know, the need to replace that and bring it up to current standards, too.
Good.
Super. Okay.
Let's look at the rate structure that's going to help fund those capital projects over the five years. So, when we look at the rate structure for water, we have two components. We have a service charge, monthly service charge, which is fixed regardless of how much water you use, and then a volume metric charge. And, the service charge varies by meter size. Each customer has a meter. Most residential customers are now 1-inch meters. Is that correct, Justin?
Yeah, any new connections, 1-inch.
So, we have anywhere from 5/8 to 3/4 to 1-inch. Those are mainly residential. It recovers the cost of billing, meters and services. And what are meter and services? When you think about it, you've got to replace these meters every now and again. You have the field service crew going out there, answering customers' questions and doing those sorts of things, pulling meters, repairing meters, and working through all those sorts of things. We've got some fire protection costs that we're covering in the service charge, kind of that readiness to serve capacity component. Obviously, when we look at the fire flow required, when you turn on a hydrant, it's pretty substantial, and we have to have the capacity to be able to do that. Recover a small component of that capacity in there. And there is a bit of capital expenditures we try to recover in the service charge to add to that kind of fixed component, because we know that the utilities are, the costs are, 80% of the cost, 85% of the cost are fixed, the rest are variable. Well, if we design rates that way, everybody's service charge would be $100 per month, and the volume charge would be 20 cents, or whatever. So, when we look at, with this, with our cost of service, we look at customers, how customers use the water, and we look at the customer-related costs. So, it's a little bit different than a fixed variable analysis. Although, the rate structure is a fixed and variable rate structure, we try to recover the costs based on the characteristics of those different types of customer classes. So, by adding some costs into the service charge, recover some capital-related costs, it helps with revenue stability and ensures that there's some funding set aside for those capital projects. One thing to keep in mind is we do have some policy rates, and that's circuit breaker. The low-income rates are 70% of residential rates. Outside-city rates are 120% greater than inside-city rates. So, we have some uniform and tiered structures for the volumetric structure. Recovers the cost to treat water, treat and distribute water. Again, circuit breaker rates, 70%, and outside-city rates are 1.2x. So, given that setup, let's take a look at the rate structures. Here's your service charge by meter size. There's a lot of numbers here, but really, I'll just highlight the 3/4 inch here. We can see that we're going to go from 1332 to 1367, about 20, 30 cents adjustment there, 34 cents adjustment to get us to fiscal year '25, and it escalates as it goes through fiscal year '29. On the volumetric side, I'll highlight the single family. We have a tiered structure, yes.
Could you roll back to that previous slide, please? Yeah, so, like 20 cents in a year, that doesn't seem like very much. How did you determine that? We were 4% on the water cost, but why is that so low?
Well, that's part of the cost service analysis. We look, we break up, we look at the O and M charges, the capital costs we have for the year, and we allocate those to, those costs may be recovered from the volumetric charge versus the customer charge. And, the way it worked out this year was that we wanted to maintain, part of the objective was to maintain recovering approximately 25% of your total rate revenue within your fixed charge, the monthly service charge. And, at the time, based on changes in the usage characteristics since our last study, you were getting about 28%. So, we dialed that back to 25%, and that might be part of that slower adjustment between these years here. So, it's got to be made up somewhere in the volumetric rate, so you're going to see that as well.
All right. Okay, we've got another question. Josh?
Your footnote 2 says outside-city rates are 1.5x inside-city. Is it 1.2 or is it 1.5?
Could be 1.2.
Should be 1.2, okay. No, don't worry. I have a follow-up, then. I think some of the answers...
1.5. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I've got that backwards. It is 1.5.
It is 1.5.
It's different on the west side. My apologies.
So, outside-city rates, does that refer to water that's distributed to customers who are not inside-city limits?
That's correct. So, part of our system, we serve out into the county areas, south of town, Pocatello Creek Road, up Gabees, some other areas where the city had just recently annexed. And so, some of those would drop off, you know, through those annexations, but yeah, it's customers outside of the city.
Is, so my question, then, I mean, these are designed to recoup costs. It makes sense to me why customers who are further out are more expensive to service for water. That doesn't go away just because, or does it go away because they get annexed into the city?
It does, I believe.
Okay.
I believe through annexation, that is part of the annexation requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, when we have an annexation like that, you have to consider all those things. You know, it's, an outside-of-the-city rate should be more than inside-the-city rate, for sure.
I guess, I guess my, the point that I was, and I was kind of just asking about is like, not necessarily the idea that, for example, if you service somebody in the recent, in the upcoming annexation that we've discussed, like, if it costs more to service that area because they're further out, that doesn't go away just because they get annexed?
No, but they're now part of the city where before they were not.
Sure.
The asset that the city owns is charging people that do not own that asset more for the use of that asset.
Okay.
Is that a fair representation?
That makes sense. Yeah, it does.
Following up on what Josh just said, is our annexations, then, that revenue drop, are those figured in what you're doing a calculation on here? We're taking in 500 acres and a couple of hundred households. We're going to lose some income stream, then, if I'm not, if I'm looking at this right.
Yeah, that wasn't really factored into the equation, because we were kind of looking at a snapshot in time with our current accounts.
Could that be significant, or are there sufficient reserves to get us through the next five years so we can recalculate?
There aren't that many customers, and we still get rate revenue from them. It's just an additional 50%. I would not think it's too material to the affecting the revenues. I mean, what's going to affect the revenues most is a wet summer, more so than charging them from 1.5 down to 1.
But they're, they're not going to pay that 1.5 if we annex them. We're only going to be at a 1.0.
They pay the 1.0.
Yeah, and I think that's why, that it's so important on the utility aspect to have these reserve policies in place, to take some of those peaks and valleys out, because it's just too hard to try and predict.
A crystal ball isn't that good?
It's horrible.
Well, when we do our revenue projection, we also recognize, we look at historical data of wet years, dry years. We try to be conservative, recognizing there's always something that's going to come in one year. We can't predict that with our crystal ball. So, we try to be conservative anyway in our demand estimates, both in water and sewer.
Yeah, I mean, for instance, the last five-year study, no one would have known that we would have had a pandemic during that. So, you know, I think overall, we fared fairly well with looking at that and looking at our rate increases within this study and, you know, holding fairly steady from one plan to the next.
Since you bring that up, if I may, Mr. Mayor, did that affect the volume of water we served?
We certainly saw some impact, but not as significant as what we saw with weather patterns and other things like that. I mean, we're receiving a lot more water the last two to three years of precipitation. You know, we're having longer spring months. That's carrying over. We're not seeing those maximum day production levels that we had even five years ago. And so, even though the city's growing, you know, there's conservation measures and other things that are working and affected within the rates, too, part of the rate design.
The utilities saw a lot of shifting from commercial to residential, used to office, home, but it was kind of a wash at the end of the day with total demands. The revenue shifted because maybe residential rates happened to be higher than commercial.
More home toilets flushed than in the store.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. So, first 25,000 gallons for resident, for a single-family residential and over 25,000 gallons. That's what's set, I believe, back in 2002 when I worked on this study. And, what we found is, what's important about this tiered structure, making sure you're recovering your revenue, is looking at, well, how much volume is being billed in tier one versus tier two? We want to be very cognizant of that, because when we go back and do the solving to figure out what the rates need to be. We found that the percentage of volume recovered or billed in tier one versus tier two has been pretty consistent since the last study, around 80% in tier one and 20% being billed in tier two. So, you get some revenue stability there. Now, that's why we kind of dialed back the service charge by, the amount of service charge revenue we want to recover in terms of total revenues, because when you think about it, when people think of revenue stability, they think about the, well, we need to increase our service charge to get revenue stability. Well, not really. If you think about it, the first 5,000 gallons of single-family usage is almost guaranteed in the wintertime and in the summertime. It's kind of a stable revenue stream. So, putting a lot of emphasis on the service charge without considering that, that's where it causes maybe some undue burden on those who have difficulty paying for the bill, because they also have to pay the fixed charge on wastewater and sanitation, too. So, we want to be cognizant of that. So, here's a typical bill, a winter bill and a summer bill. 2504 goes to 2599. Now, I've not done the percentage change on that, but it might be less than 4%. We have to realize, our costing analysis showed that some customer classes should be paying more in the volumetric versus less. So, on the average, with total bills, you see a 4% revenue adjustment, or you're going to recover enough revenue to where it's 4% greater than our projected last year. I can tell you that our irrigation rates have gone up higher than our single-family rates. Irrigation's a small class, but that additional revenue increase does contribute, and it all has to do with the demand patterns of single-family. Irrigation places higher demands on the system than single-family does. Obviously, single-family uses water in the summertime, but irrigation uses a lot more and very little in the wintertime. Commercial customers are pretty consistent throughout the year. So, based on those types of demands, they incur different costs to serve, and thus, the cost of service. And so, that's why there might be cost shifting between the customer classes.
Rick?
On that last slide.
Yeah.
Multifamily is 32 cents cheaper than a single-family. Isn't the cost of production the same, cost of delivering that water to those customers?
Well, like I mentioned, the base that goes into this is how those customers are using the water, the demands they place on the system, the peak demands they place on the system. Facilities are sized to meet peak demands, and when you look at the different customer classes, we have to apportion the cost to the various customer classes based on how the system is designed. Like, water plants, wells are designed to meet maximum day demands, and we look at the demand patterns of the different various customer classes to see what would be the proportionate share of cost to meet these peak demands or these peak capacity-related costs that are required regardless of whether you sell a gallon of water or not. And that's how we differentiate. With multifamily, multifamily tends to be a lower volumetric rate than single-family, because there's not as much irrigation associated with multifamily. Think about an apartment complex in comparison to all the indoor usage going in with all the units. There's irrigation areas, but not as much as the ratio of single-family. So, that's the reason why multifamily is lower than single-family. Same thing with commercial and industrial. Think about an industrial customer, their demand, they're going to be maxing out their tap, 4-inch tap or whatever, 24 hours a day at a constant stream. Yes, it's a lot more volume of water, but their peak demands on the system, they're just not there. So, they're not having to pay for those peak demand, peak costs on the system. You think about electric. In the summertime, when you're doing time-of-day pricing, or you get charged for, you turn your air conditioner on at noon during the week, there's a different charge for that. It's a peak demand charge, very similar concept. In fact, the principles of electric rates and water rates are predicated on each other. So, that's the basis for it. Multifamily classes tend to have lower peaking demands, which incurs lower costs to them than, say, the single-family or irrigation water. If you look at the summer line water, the, we've set the, this is a policy-based decision, but the summer line rate is $3.66, which is the same as the second-tier rate in single-family, recognizing that they have... recognizing that they have higher demands on the system. Yeah, they don't use water in the wintertime, they use a lot in the summertime. We have to have the capacity ready to serve the summer, the irrigation customer, regardless of whether they use the water or not. It's gotta be there. We don't wanna be out of capacity to be able to serve customers. So, is that?
I guess, my, my question in that instance would be, isn't that more a capacity fee than a usage fee?
Well, the capacity.
To equalize that for that summer line?
Uh, well, this is more, the operational costs associated with providing peak demand and capacity. The, 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 the capacity fee recovers the portion of capacity system that you have to buy into to be able to meet your capacity requirements. But the operating of, the operational costs associated with peak demands is really what's covered through the rates. In theory, though, we know that capacity fees can always recover all of those costs because they come and go. So, there's a portion, those transfers from the operating fund, the capacity fee fund, that's part of this cost in here as well.
And your capacity fee is a one-time fee.
Yeah.
Based upon the year of connection.
Yeah. It guarantees your right to, to, to water service. I'll get to some more of that later. Okay, moving on to water pollution control. I can tell you the graphs are very similar here. We're gonna look at similar assumptions here, similar benefits and salaries. Again, a 90-day operating reserve, our repair and replacement capital reserve is about $2 million a year. Again, same principle in terms of revenue adjustments on an annual basis, smooth and predictable. So, here's what we're funding with our capacity fees and other fees, other revenue sources. We have our capital costs here, a variety of different treatment and collection system and repair and replacement projects. We have our debt service we're paying at $8.4 million. And here's how we're getting a lot of the other funding. We're using some reserves in the capacity fee fund, I'm sorry, in the, in the capital-related fund in wastewater, we're drawing down some of the reserves. We're getting about $2.6 million in capacity fees. Again, we're having a large transfer from the operating fund to fund a lot of this. We have some other income in there, some interest, interest income based on the fund balances and things, but fairly minor there. So, very similar to water. So, we are using capacity fees. That does help offset additional costs to rate payers, because we're able to use that capacity revenue to help reimburse those customers of the past who helped build a system to serve existing and, and future customers. Here's our operating cash flow metrics here. Again, the same chart, we have our O&amp;M expense and our red there for transfers out, that's our expenditures. The dotted line shows if we did not raise rates, that we'd be below. And we have our, our line here, our amber line of revenue, and it meets the annual revenue requirements through 2028. We see a jump in 2029. That's just because we're making an additional transfer to the capital fund. So, we're still funding everything. We just made a transfer there. So, let's see how that affects the fund balance. We've got very ample fund balances in the first three years. So, in that fourth year, we're drawing that down in fiscal year 29. I don't recall exactly what the capital expenditure or what the, the, the transfer was made for, so we can definitely get back to you on that. But, same as water, we're in a good position to get off year six through nine, six through 10 after this five-year period. So, we're set up well for that. And because we're using reserves to help fund projects, we're able to maintain lower revenue adjustments. And those revenue adjustments are about 3% per year, which is, I think, again, something similar to what we had in the previous study. You can see that we do draw down reserves, and that last year, we go from 17.9 million to $12.1 million, but we still have undesignated or reserves moving into year six through 10 of $5.4 million. So, we're really trying to minimize the revenue adjustments and utilizing reserves to the extent possible on all those capital projects over the next couple of years. Debt service coverage is more than ample during the study period. So, wastewater rate structure components, some similarities, some difference here. We have a flat rate for residential, regardless of the wastewater contributed. We do consider the fact that the cost is based off of, we know the average single-family residential contributes about 4,000 gallons of, of water to the treatment plant. That's really based off of winter usage, when you're not irrigating outside. All other customers are based, have a service charge and volumetric charge associated with it, or a strength-related charge, dollars per pound. And outside-city rates here are 1.2, must have flipped the slides at one point, so this one is 1.2. We have some extra strength costs, because you do have some extra strength customers, individual customers. And they get charged for all of their strength or BOD and total suspended solids, and nitrogen gets contributed to the, the plant over the course, during, each month. And those are, we have specific charges for those on a dollar-per-pound basis. And we treat for, we charge for biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids, total casual nitrogen and, and phosphorus. And phosphorus is always a sticky wicked, it's very expensive to treat, and that way, we capture the cost to, we, we, by, by having a charge for phosphorus and all of these, we're able to maintain equity between residential customers and these high-strength customers with not requiring residential customers to flip the bill for this high-strength flow that's coming into the treatment plant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are we able to isolate wastewater that comes in from these individual customers?
Or? What do you mean by isolate?
I guess, if it all gets mixed into one big pot, right?
Right.
You're, you're paying, it feels like you'd be paying a disproportionate amount, or is it just like a one-time dump a bucket of chemicals in and that treats the whole thing, right? I, I know I'm simplifying and.
With, with these larger industries, we sample them, we actually measure the amount of flow before they enter the municipal sewer system.
Okay.
And we also sample what they are discharging.
Okay.
So, those are measured, I mean, the, the flow is continuous, samples, we'll grab one to two samples a week, average those out over the month, and that's how we come up with the strength charges and the flow. So, each individual industry that has charged these extra charges are charged exactly what they are contributing to the system.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so.
Hey, Rick?
Are there potential discharges that are damaging our system, Levi?
Always, always. We have a, an entire section of my department called that pre-treatment department that goes and does inspections throughout the city. They spend a fair amount of time with our industries, but we have a very good working relationship with all of our industries. But they're in every automotive shop, every dentist office, every restaurant, making sure that they are following the city ordinances and following the letter of the law that we have set out. There's a whole process. If they're not, we really haven't had too many problems. Most of the time, everybody is following the rules and doing exactly what they're supposed to. And so, but we do have a section of my department that is in charge of making sure that that doesn't happen.
Are you notified in advance when a new potential source of that kind of discharge comes on board?
We, if a new building is being built, we're able to identify what they need, what sort of pre-treatment devices they may need. Let's say, somebody decides to build a new mechanic shop. We'll let them know what, that they need to put an oil-sand separator in, they need all this stuff, and that we will be over there watching. If somebody happens to move in somewhere, there's not a lot of resources that we have that can identify those new businesses moving in. They're actually called move-ins. If we have somebody that, you know, maybe some light duty or something where somebody has to come and do that, they'll actually do drive-bys, and they just start driving, hey, this is a new business, this isn't on our rolls for what it is, drop off literature, here's what you need to do, here's the permit you need to fill out. So, it's, it's very inefficient for us to find these businesses that are, that may just move in and change spots, as opposed to, like I said, new, new buildings are, either the building department, you know, works out, the engineers all let us know, we all work together. For those new buildings that come in, it's the move-ins and move-outs that are a little difficult for us.
If I may follow up, it would seem that would be a good application for the business license that we've been discussing.
That's the, one of the main reasons for a business license. We unfortunately, what happens, most of the time when a new business comes in like that, they're move-ins, you call them. The move-ins, we don't know they're there, they don't know the rules and regulations that they're supposed to follow. They've invested all their money, and now we come in and say, you can't, you know, give us that stuff anymore and tell you do this, which is another $50,000 or something. And then, we are the bad guys because they didn't know what they were supposed to do to start with. And so, that's absolutely a good reason for the business.
We've had some new business owners very frustrated, you know, because they just didn't know. And they really don't know, you know, we do our best to, to educate and to, to put the information out there, but sometimes you just don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. With extra-strength charges, the city's always been very proactive on that. We have a, we were able to get a good detailed listing of historical flows and strengths, and a lot of other large cities don't even track that. They don't, they have these law, high-strength charges, but they're applied, maybe not consistently. So, we had all of the detailed information from every single one of the high-strength customers to help look at our analysis and develop our revenue projections and whatnot. So, here's our rate schedule for wastewater, flat charge for single-family. You'll notice everything here is about 3%. We, this 3% is obviously not, is somewhat happenstance. When we looked at our revenue adjustments, it was 3%, and we finally got our cost service dialed in and looking at that, that, those results are about the same. So, we've, we stayed with the 3% across the board for all the different customers. And you can see the multifamily and commercial have a two-component rate structure, service charge and, and volume charge as well. And here's industrial and the extra-strength surcharges here. We also have septicage, which a lot of communities don't have any longer. But here, we've made sure that we're recovering the cost. And you see the cost is much higher because the, the strength of the, of the fluids in there are, are much more concentrated. Obviously, you think about a portage on and septic tanks and that sort of thing. So, hence the reason it's, the price is, is much different than, than the other strange charges. Here's a typical waste, monthly wastewater bill for a single-family, about a dollar increase each year. Goes up to a $1.11 increase by fiscal year 29. And obviously, you know, you want to say, well, that's not that much. Well, it's relative, and we do have to consider there's sanitation and water on there too. So, we had to be mindful of that when we were looking at our revenue adjustments, that it is, everything's kind of put together on one bill. Let's look at a bill comparison in peer utility. You know, caveat with looking at surveys like this is that every utility is so different. Some have wells, some have surface water treatment, some are very dense, others are, have customers spread out, and there's just more cost spread among smaller customer, or a lower customer base. So, that's just one thing to keep in mind. Also, when we look at our, I'll get to that peer utility survey in, in a bit. I thought this graph was coming later. Put that on hold here. Here's a, a bill comparison for different levels of consumption under the existing and proposed rates for winter water use, medium water use, which is about 6,000 gallons, and then summer usage, which is around 18,000 gallons. So, you know, obviously, when you look over the course of the year, your bill might be higher in the wintertime increase than the summertime. So, you average it out, you may not, you know, it might not be as, as high as the full 4% or whatnot. So, some increases here across the board with existing and proposed for water and wastewater, and that's typical just based on the, the revenue adjustments we've projected for the study period on water and wastewater. Now, to the peer utility survey. So, we looked at a number of utilities here. You can see everything from Idaho Falls to Chubbick. I want to point out real quick that Ammon and Twin Falls have separate residential irrigation meters available to where the, that might affect how the residential rates are set. So, it's, it's tough to say, but they do have separate taps available. It might be non, I think those are non-potable taps that are available. We look at where Pocatello is falling today, you're jumping up a few spots, but let's, we need to consider that some of these are older rates. We don't know what they're doing in fiscal year 25. They might be going up 30%. We don't know. But, so moving up slightly on, on the board here compared to the other utilities, and obviously, something to look at again once fiscal year 25 rates may be adopted. Let's move on to sanitation. Obviously, some inflation factors, some growth. Salaries and benefits are a big component of the O&amp;M expense, and we have CIP at 4%. Again, 90 days of operating reserve and repair and replacement, or replacement capital reserve, a million dollars a year, considering the majority of the capital is vehicles and equipment compared to distribution mains and replace, and collection mains and wells and that sort of thing. And same policy, smooth and predictable revenue adjustments. So, we look at the operating cash flow, and we, we did do the, looking at capital and operating component for sanitation, but really, all the revenue sources are from rate revenues. There's, there's not sanitation capacity fees, although those are becoming more popular. We've been to see sanitation capacity fees for landfill-related costs and, and helping pay for closure costs. So, that's, that's kind of a little more popular in California. But again, when we look at this here, we, we show the operating fund without the revenue adjustments are gonna be below your operating expenditures, but we have the blue line here, which is right at the mark for meeting annual revenues expenditures, and that's because we're transferring excess funds to this, this capital fund we've got to help fund the equipment and, and, and new vehicles and things. So, we look at our balance here. We are drawing down our reserve balance a little bit, but that was, that was part of the plan with this. You still have more than ample balance to get you started in the year six through 10. So, we're set up pretty well for the first five years and next five years. Here's the typical, here's the, the, the rate schedule. The 96-gallon cart now includes recycling, and in part of our survey, we've included that as well as part of our survey. We have a billing charge here of $1.97 going to $2.03, and everything's going up at the same revenue adjustment as the overall financial plan increase. And this is not an all-inclusive rate schedule. There are a number of other fees and things that apply to certain types of customers. Typical monthly bill, about a 65, 65 cent increase in fiscal year 25 and 68 cents, so on and so forth. So, around the same order of magnitude as, as in wastewater. So, let's look at a utility survey for sanitation. We don't have all the same utilities here because not all of them provide solid waste through, through the, the city. You can see that Pocatello's the lowest and then jumps up a little bit. Being the lowest is great in this respect. Sometimes we would say, well, being the lowest doesn't mean, isn't always a good thing. You could be putting off a lot of repair and maintenance and really starving the system of the maintenance it needs. That's the exact opposite here, based on the capital program we looked at and all the different programs that sanitation utilities is, is doing to maintain high efficiency and effectiveness. And being the lowest here, that's, that's a very good thing. Again, we don't know when these other utilities might be raising their rates, and these all, we try to make a like-to-like comparison by including recycling. Some of them go recycling separately, but I've included them in here as well. So, anyway, in a, in a good position.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Has there been any discussion with the county about landfill rates as we had a couple of years ago when they were toying with the increase?
Yeah, we reached out and they, they had no definitive answers over the next five years. So, as of right now, we are operating at what we're operating at.
God, that's a surprise.
Yeah.
We did reach out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, you never really helped us, and so, I don't know why you'd think they would have helped us on this one.
Hell, I was hoping.
Well, we've completed the water, wastewater and sanitation financial plans. We're almost there. I'll go into capacity fees real quick, and again, not some, not major changes there. Capacity fees. For those who may not be familiar, let's give a quick definition of them. As I mentioned earlier, they're designed to recover a connector's proportionate share of backbone facilities capacity required to serve them. It's a one-time charge. It's like joining a gym. You pay the initiation fee, which gives you access to everything, but then you pay the monthly charges to make sure the treadmill's working when you show up. So, the capacity fees, similar analogy there. We've got backbone facilities for water include pumping, storage, wells, and those large facilities that kind of benefit all customers, okay? Those facilities that benefit all customers. Wastewater, same thing. The wastewater treatment plant benefits all customers, large collection mains benefit all customers. And those are the costs that we want to look at trying to develop our capacity fee off of. And there's a state statute or the Revenue Bond Act, which allows for the collection of, of capacity fee revenues. It's been cited in a couple of court cases. There are a couple of impact fee court cases, higher-profile ones from a number of years back, that we're also quoting that. So, this one's compliant with that, with, with, with the language in there, which is somewhat broad. We're based on the buy-in methodology, meaning that, as I talked about earlier, that there's existing capacity available, so we're looking to buy into that capacity that was built at some point and re, have an utility recoup some of those costs. And this is consistent with what we did last time. It's premised on that somebody has helped build a system with capacity available to join the system, and they buy into the system. They don't own anything, they can't take it with them when they leave, they can't sell it on Craigslist or anything like that. They've got a, it's just part of the, part of the property. They've got a, it's just part of the, part of the property. And this represents the maximum supportable fee. So the fees will show you, you can, in theory, you can adopt up to that amount. You don't have to adopt that amount. You can adopt something lower, you can adopt zero dollars. Adopting something above that amount, you might get called into question by a developer or someone who's having to pay that, what's the basis for that? So, so here we go. On water capacity fees, three quarter inch, we're going from 4,670 to 5,100, fairly nominal increase there. There's a lot, from 2019 to 2025, there've been some depreciation we need to consider and the amount of capital you've added to the system and that sort of thing. So a slight increase there and that increases up through fiscal year 29. Water treatment, the water pollution control facility has two fees. They have a treatment fee and a collection fee. And that's broken out because capacity fees from, received from customers in Chubbick don't pay for a collection system. They have their own collection line that goes directly to the plant. So here's the treatment related fees, 2,550 to 2,640, a slight increase there, and then increases each year thereafter. Collection system, minor, minor adjustment here, and that increases up to fiscal year 29. So I don't have a, I do not have a survey comparison on the capacity fees because many utilities don't charge them or they call them something different and there's not a way to discern whether in fact it is a purchasing capacity or whether they're actually just charging for the tap, to install the tap. So we did a little research and it was really inconsistent and we only had a few that we could have compared. It wouldn't have been a good representative comparison. So that concludes my presentation on the water, wastewater sanitation rates and capacity fees.
Brent has a question.
Right. So it looks like we have rate increases somewhere between 3 and 4% consistently. Is that right?
Correct.
But we have inflation factors that are significantly higher than that, correct?
In some areas, yes.
In, in some areas. So it looks like we're going to be used, it's almost subsidizing the rate increase by use of reserves, am I understanding that?
We are drawing down reserves in certain years, yes.
And, and that keeps the percentage of increase on the fees lower, is that right?
Yes.
So what is the thought process behind that of essentially subsidizing the rate increases with reserves as opposed to just increasing the rates equivalent to what, how much your costs are going up?
Well, it's, it's a balance. And when we had talked about the reserve levels, we, I think Paramount was maintaining the, the lower revenue adjustments and using some reserves that were available. When you looked at those graphs, we, our reserves were more than meeting the targets. So we wanted to take advantage of, of drawing down some of the reserves, obviously not getting us to an emergency situation, but to where we still had ample reserves at the end. We could have looked at things the other way and looked at revenue adjustments, making sure that our revenue, revenues meet exactly our expenditures each year and we don't use reserves at all. But that, you know, that may have come at a higher cost. And then at the end of five years, we have a fairly very large balance, which we're, we're not using and that's rate payer money.
Yeah, that, that would be just my concern, that we have adequate reserves on hand at all times.
I can give you an example. The big thing for us is trying to have some sort of predictability on these rates. You know, one year, we'll, we'll use sanitation, for example, we may only buy one truck a year. So we really would only have to raise it a half a percent one year to cover the extra cost of that truck. But then in the next year, we have to buy four or five trucks and that would be a 10% increase. And so this is just to take some of that variability out and have a more steady, stable rate structure.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
What kind of black swan events could disrupt your projection?
Water and wastewater projections?
Or sanitation? I mean, what, i- i- is there something that concerns you about making these kinds of projections that could cause them to go awry?
I think for water, the biggest issue is, would be a very wet summer. That will, that can really harm revenues, especially if you get your revenues in just one or two months. Personally, when I worked at Denver Water, we had a wet summer in July and August and we lost about $30 million in revenues. And it was, it was a hit. But again, because you have 25% of your revenue coming from the fixed charge, you have kind of that guaranteed revenue from the single family and commercial, there'll be an impact, but you also have reserves available to you. And that's the challenge, is that you can't see a wet summer coming, but you can see a drought coming. So you can prepare for that. It's tough to prepare for a wet summer. The other, only other things are, you know, force majeure or, or some sort of unforeseen catastrophic event that, that, you know, would take your system out of service or something like that. But wet weather is, it can be kind of a killer for water. It's always wastewater, a bit more stable. And I would say there's probably be other issues that, more infrastructure related issues that could cause some, some huge harm rather than changes in, in flows.
I know what gives us a certain level of comfort is the utilities, is Justin mentioned that. We went through a pandemic and we weathered that pretty well based upon these studies that we've, we've gone through. And so we're, we're pretty confident in, in what they're presenting to us. It's about as black swan as it gets, right?
Well, I think, I think the reality is, is, is we've asked them to keep the rates low and stay near that 3 to 4% increase on an annual basis. I did the math and maybe I'm wrong, but it's like a $1.95 a month per customer for all of them combined. And, and what we don't want, if we do run into a wet summer at some point, that we, we have to look at it the next year and say, well, we know we were planning on 3.5%, but we're going to have to go to 7% to make up those revenues. And so that's, they've always done a really good job at making sure we were even kill and, and things just rode the way they're supposed to.
Well, I, you know, I, I have a lot of confidence in these projections. We've had very high inflation rates across this country the last couple of years, but the last numbers I looked at, both CIP and Producers Cost Index, that's come down substantially. It's in the 3, 3.5% range, last time I looked, in the Pacific Northwest. And I think that gives us good projection and to me, these are realistic projections.
And as I mentioned earlier, that we are conservative on our demand projections on the water side, recognizing that, that wet summer could happen. We don't want to base, every year, based on a wet summer because we might be really understating demands and have increases that may not need to be realized.
Yeah.
Well, and I might just add, this is just kind of a plug for our utilities and for the city, but we always get beat up every year during budgeting that we're the most expensive city to live in, in the country, in the world. And, you know, there's never been more expensive. But you look at these things and we're at the bottom of every comparison that we, that we have, which is, which is huge, if you ask me. I, I really appreciated the one about Chubbick. I've always told people Chubbick's another $100 more to live in Chubbick than it is in Pocatello and it, and it shows. And so it's, I think they've done a great job with it and, and I know I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, but, but Pocatello's always done a really good job keeping costs at, at a minimal and, and really focused on that. And there's rate studies help us with that, so.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, to the credit of the citizens, Justin and I sat down a couple of years ago and went over past water production records for a long time back, and we aren't increasing much each year, to the credit of our citizens that are conserving, using more efficient irrigation methods for their lawns and gardens and their trees and, you know, going to low volume toilets and all those things that, that don't use as much water per capita. And it's, it's, and people are always questioning, you know, we're going to run out of water, we're going to run out of water. Give me, we have all kinds of water that we can allocate. We've got the reserves, we've got the rights, and we aren't using them because people are being smarter about how they're using water.
Well, I think with that water, we just finished Water Week. And that, today's the last day. And I don't know how many people they have come through there on an annual basis, but it is a, it is a big education piece and, and people are paying attention to it, which is great, so.
Got to go up there and see the wooden piece of pipe. That's just amazing.
I know. Yeah, so, okay, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, then we'll move to agenda item six is applicant tracking software presentation. Human resources staff members will be in attendance to present information and receive council feedback regarding a new applicant tracking software. The current system will no longer be available after July 2024.
I'm glad to say good morning, not good afternoon. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director.
Holly Harnsberger, HR, Benefits and Compliance Coordinator. Say that 10 times fast.
So our applicant tracking system has been in place for a little over, I think, close to nine years. It was free, it came free. It came with our website development. We knew that it was hitting to a status of unsupported this fiscal year. So in the budget cycle, we were going to ask for money for a new system. Well, it's not going unsupported, it's going end of life within the current budget year. So I sadly sit before you saying, I need money for a new one. So we did an RFP with the help of Fleet and by, we, I mean, Theresa and Ciara did it all and they coordinated it for us. We had two responses. One was Keldair and the other was Impex Track. I had to write that down to say it correctly. Keldair is a US-based company that only works on applicant tracking. Impex Track is an international company that has a full HRIS system with additional modules. We sat down and we went through demos with both company and we looked at their proposals. And HR is requesting to bring forward the Keldair contract to a council meeting for approval. So Keldair's implementation is $1,500 and then the annual cost is 29,000. Impex Track implementation is 12,800 and then the annual contract is 16,000. So we are actually asking to go with the more expensive system for several reasons. One, they are US-based, so the call centers when we have, need assistance is based in time zones that we can actually access during business hours. Also, the system is very user friendly. It'll modernize our, all of our recruiting. Currently, we have one application for every type of position. We'll be able to customize that to police, to fire, to general employees, to utilities, so that we can ask the right questions for those positions. Also, currently, we integrate with Indeed for our job postings, Indeed.
Oh.
So, and that's free. And that was one of the major requirements we had when going to a new system. Keldair actually hooks into five systems, Indeed, ZipRecruiter, Monster, Glassdoor and LinkedIn. So our audience is going to get much, much bigger. So unfortunately, it is a mid-year ask because they're killing the system faster than we thought they were. We've worked with Mayor Blad and we think we can do the funding within current operating budgets, but, and I've talked with Chris Sorenson and he has built the cost of the next renewal into his next year's budget for IT.
So two, two questions. When does this software, the current system expire?
September 30th.
Okay. So then the next question is connectivity wise or usage, are, will department heads also be able to have access to seeing these? Will they have connectivity to it? Is it only HR specific who have connectivity to this?
So we'll be able to set up permissions with the, with the system implementation to where the department heads will be able to have access to their own department needs. Obviously, we'll, we'll keep it separate based on applicant pools. But yes, we'll be able to, to provide the, the information to department heads. The workflow itself will actually be really streamlined. I think we'll be able to revise some of our current paperwork and processing, processes right now and actually streamline them and make them more, more efficient.
So along with that same process of thought, for your department in general, will this help, will this make things more convenient for you? Will it make it easier for you? Like from, from what you're currently doing now with the current system, is it offering more benefit and more robust?
Our current system is just slightly above paper. I mean, that, that's, it's kind of the bare bottom of what you can do. It's electronic, that's all I can say about it. The new system will, the biggest deal is it's the ease for applicants. They don't have to create an account to apply, which will increase the number of people who apply for jobs. They can apply from their smartphone. We can communicate with those applicants via text message through the application itself. We can request more materials such as certifications, writing samples through the process itself and they just, I signed up on our dummy account and I keep getting noticed that I haven't finished applying for the project engineer every day. It reminds me. So we'll have the test frequency. Right now, a lot of our process is manual. So a department can review applications and then they have to put in a little comment that then comes back to HR and then one of us digs through the 4,000 emails. That's because of summer hiring. And we have to dismiss the candidates. Now managers will be able to actively move people around and we can see what they're doing and approve it, but it gives managers more control. It takes a little bit of the workload off HR and the best part is for applicants, it's much easier.
You still got your finger, go ahead. And then we got Josh after you.
What's an estimated number of applications that you receive, like in a month or a year or week?
The new system, we've had to price at 60 open requisitions at a time because of our seasonal hiring. This year, we've had a lot of applications just because of the market. On average, I think we've had between 15 and 20 posted at a time. That's this year. Historically, that's going to fluctuate.
Josh, and then Rick.
One, one thing to credit about ease of applicants. If you are an engineer, for example, as your example that you bring up, those people are typically going to make, like, building an account on the city website is not going to deter them from applying, right? If their job is something that fits their technical certification, professional license, et cetera, they're going to go through those steps. Your summer parks jobs, to be lifeguards, to be seasonal parks and rec maintenance, they won't. Like they're, they're looking for opportunities for summer or seasonal employment and they are shotgunning applications and they're sending out a lot of them and they're sending them out quickly and creating accounts as deterrents. And that, so that's, that's a big boon, I think, for those positions that are oftentimes a little bit more difficult to hire and require more, difficult to fill all of them.
Can I add something to that? So one thing that's really exciting about this Keldair app is that you, it, they, they say it's, it's about two minutes to actually fill, fill out the application in about 12 clicks. Our current system takes about 12 minutes and it's like 75 clicks. So it's definitely much more streamlined and it is, we were looking at the, at the end user for when we were really taking a look at these products to try to make sure that we can attract all applica, all applicants, candidates.
Rick?
Three questions, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I presume this is a cloud-based system?
It is.
What about security? Does that satisfy security needs to keep this information private?
So we had Rick Satterfield from IT sit on the panel with us and he did review the software. I would defer a technical expertise question to Rick Satterfield.
We have our IT director at the back of the room. If I should ask him to fill in the.
I'm bobbing yet.
They can't see on camera, though.
Yeah, that's right.
Chris Sorenson, CIO for the city. Yes, it's going over an HTTPS connection, which is a secure HTTP connection. So the data is encrypted as it goes both directions, so.
Okay, good. Last question. Will this system do everything you need to satisfy the, this applicant flood we seem to get in this time of year? You're satisfied with everything it'll do? Good.
Super. Corey?
In your presentation, when you bring this to council, will we get somewhat of a look of what the application process is going to look like?
If you would like it, we can.
You could apply for a job.
I'd like to see, well.
You applying or?
I'm not applying, I'm just saying I'd kind of like to see what it looks like. And then the general public might like to see kind of what it looks like to show like it's a.
We'll put you to work.
I'm not qualified for anything.
We're thinking about mowing lawns. I think you could do that.
I could probably do that.
And has you got your name written down already for?
I've offered. Haven't got a call back, but.
If council would prefer, when we bring this to the next council meeting, we will make sure that there is a sample so you can see how the system integrates and what it looks like.
Sounds good.
And how do you?
Hayden?
How do you spell it?
I know, right? K E L D A I R.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to agenda item seven, Legacy Park Development Plan Presentation. Parks and Recreation Department, staff members. Parks and Recreation Department staff members will be in attendance to discuss design plans for and future development options of a new 4.82 acre park in the Highland area, Highland East Bench area. The park will be located at 3350 Iron Bend and will be known as Legacy Park. Is this too different? It is.
Yes.
How did I get to here? Oh, kind of need one. And then let me get this.
You're welcome.
I printed the presentation when there was a little bit of a hiccup this morning, so you have both, just in case. Good morning, Anne Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. I just thought I would keep this on the brain for you guys of a, of a commitment that we've made and to develop another park in the Satterfield area. So the park will be called Legacy Park. Its address is 3350 Iron Bend. So it's about a block above the temple. So of course, it's a 4.82 acre park. It's got two purposes. The first one is for enjoyment of citizens and the public. And the second one is storm water retention area. So you can see in your copy there that there is quite a big bowl to retain water. We're also going to use it as a sled hill, hopefully. And then there's a walking path. There's space for a playground or pickleball court, not both. We're hoping for restroom facilities and a pavilion there. I'd like to say that Jim Engelsi helped. He did the work to make that pretty picture of that park. So I wanted to thank him for his expertise there. So you guys have a bigger copy in your packet, so you can see that a little bit better. But let me give a little bit of a history about the park as well, just so, because I was learning what we committed to. I'm guessing some of you didn't know what we've committed to as well. So in March of 2022, we have an MOU agreement with Satterfield Realty and Agreement that they do a portion of this park, and then we do a portion of this park, and they provided us the property. So the final plat kind of started the clock on the MOU, and that final plat for Crestview Estates was signed in July of 2023. So that's really the date that the clock starts for our MOU. Of course, here I am in the spring, talking about kind of what the budget would look like, whether we fund a portion of that this year or we fund a portion of it next year. And we do have a timeline to figure out, so I'll lay that out. And then, of course, we'd like to see some portions of the park come to life in 2025 and then some other pieces, hopefully, in the future. So the MOU details responsibilities for the developer, so grading, some stub outs for utilities, gravel pathway, those things. And to my knowledge, all of them have been done. So his grading portion is ready. We could potentially put paths in with the gravel that's already there. Our portion of this project, I've identified on that slide for you with the timeline of when it's due. So like I said, everything starts from July of 2023, and the first phase of that is an irrigation system within two years of dedication. So that means for FY '25 budget, we need to have a plan at a minimum for irrigation. The next phase of that is grass. And for me, if the irrigation system's in, there's no reason to not put seed down. Otherwise, we're just growing weeds and upsetting everybody. So I would love for those to go together, but per the MOU, we do have an additional year to make it green. After that, we need to do some extension of the water and sewer to our future restroom location. And then there's some parking lot and some paved paths that need to be done. There are some components of this and some opportunities we can take care of this year if council wishes to do that and has some funding to do that. So I've kind of laid out a little bit of a budget there. Irrigation system's about 42,000. Seeding is pretty minimal cost, like I said. Rock in that retention area down in the bowl, $3,500. Stub in for sewer in the restroom area, $7,500, and then parking lot curbing. So I added those last three components there because those are things we can do this year while the crews are there. Merrill Quayle agreed to help me get those items done while the crews are there and save us quite a bit of cost if we wanted to do that. If we wait until FY '25, we'll have to mobilize crews to have that done, and the cost will go up a little bit. But he was willing to do that. He's already talked to some contractors up there. They're actually going to be up in that area the next two months. So it would be an opportunity for us to get those things done if you'd like. And then I've laid out a timeline for, or just some costs for the parking lot asphalt, gravel, and some labor from the street department in FY '25 to finish off kind of what I consider a minimum standard for a park. That would be your pathways, your parking lot, your green space. Questions about that, kind of what that looks like? And then I've also provided some estimates on costs going out into the future. So obviously, we'd probably like to have a, at least a small family restroom there and a drinking fountain in-house. We can build those between $20,000 and $30,000, depending on how big it is. The playground, I got an estimate about two weeks ago from a vendor. That's a pretty basic playground right there, 65 to 70. And then we'd have a little more money in to put in the playground pit and some border around that. Looking at a pavilion in the future, there, that's, those are prices based on a kit from a vendor. We can probably do that a little bit less expensive if we do it in-house. I would recommend at least, my suggestion would be a 30 by 40 pavilion. That's pretty comparable to Alameda Park. I think most of you are familiar with that. 2020 might be a little bit too small, and a 40 by 60 is a pretty good-sized pavilion for a park area that I'm not sure quite meets that, that size level. So my suggestion would be a 30 by 40-foot pavilion. And then there's a few other things: signage, trees, landscaping, that outer edge of that park, where you'll see some additional landscaping. We can work on those in the future. Those are moderately cheap and things that we can do in-house. Trees we can work on as well. But I just wanted you guys kind of understand what, what would go into building this park? And if there's components that we can start to bite off now, I'd love to do that. But I recognize you have plenty of budgetary pressures, so.
Questions? Rick?
Mr. Mayor and Ann, there's a large white rectangle between Iron Bend and the park.
Yes.
What is that area?
Those are three residential lots. So there will be lots there. I would love to kind of have the park there before they start building, so they recognize upfront that I have a house lot that is next to a parking lot. I would love to see those things defined where it's not always communicated well sometimes.
Interesting. How, one more follow-up.
Absolutely.
How many parking spaces do you anticipate on that asphalt? Those lines are...
I think it's about eight.
Is that enough for a five-acre park?
It should be. The majority of the use would be the neighbors. So really, it'd be, you know, a party at a pavilion or something like that. The most usable space is down in that section by the parking lot where the pavilion would be. It is a pretty massive-sized bowl there in the middle to retain water. So that, to me, that's a, that's a sledding thing for kids.
Is this a fairly, I haven't been there yet. I don't know why, but I haven't. Is this fairly flat?
No.
That's what I thought.
It's not flat at all.
Okay.
Mostly unbuildable, and so we're making it a park.
So the pavilion area would be semi-flat. You can see the grade lines in the drawing. And then the playground or pickleball, there's really only room for one based on the grading that's there.
I would, I would hope that the council would say no pickleball court here. This would create a, a major problem for us, I think, because with one pickleball court, there would be a, a lot of people up there that would want to use it, and we could, it could create us a problem. So I like the playground piece, not the pickleball piece.
I like the playground as well. If you have to pick between the two, the playground is more user-friendly for families, and you absolutely will have conflicts with one court there.
Do you anticipate the playground could be a, what do you call it, all-user-type surface like Brooklands?
We'd have to look at that. I mean, there will be some issues to get down to it that aren't as accessible like Brooklands is. But we can definitely look at it. That does make, mean the price goes up because it's the surface that needs to be ADA accessible.
Questions? Thoughts?
One more.
Yes.
On the surfaces, there's no other streets that I can see here other than Greenfield and Legacy over here. And then, so are all the rest of those adjacent potential home sites?
Yes, all of them, all the way around, and you just walk in from those, kind of a wide alley.
Would we need any fencing?
We'll have to see. I'm not sure of the answer. I'm guessing the majority would be residential. Homes would put in fencing on their property. We might have some posts and chain along that fence line on Iron Bend just to kind of keep people off of it or from driving where they're not supposed to.
Council thoughts? A little bit of direction here. I would be looking for with the possible irrigation turf stuff for FY '24. Probably wouldn't hurt for us to get moving on it, for sure, with some of the contractors and stuff.
Or do you anticipate the fund, the funding?
We've, we've got some excess reserve we may use. We've got, there's some fund, some funds in Fund 78? Fund 78 that we might use. Obviously, we'll, we'll come back so that you know where that's coming from. But I, I didn't want to come back with the idea that, you're saying, we never said move forward at all with this. And now you're, you're doing that, but...
Well, the council made a promise two years ago to, to make, develop this park, so... I think the sooner we get that off our plate, the better off we're going to be. It certainly isn't going to get any less expensive to do in a year from now.
No.
I, I also think that the scheduling is done in the most cost-effective manner, and I appreciate that. The idea of getting crews out at the same time, trying to do so before the residential lots go in and, and kind of make it more difficult to get crews in, I think all that was done appropriately.
Okay, we'll, we'll let you know where that's coming from and what we're, we're doing with that, but... I think, I, I do agree, we would be growing weeds if we didn't add turf, and I know what that's going to do to us.
Corey anticipate to see this at the next council meeting or?
No.
We'll have to get some, I have one quote on irrigation, but I did talk to Gene briefly and just said, if council wishes, is there a place for that? And he was confident we could find that.
Yeah.
So...
Will, will the elevations cause problems in watering?
I did talk to Justin briefly, and he said with the new water tower, he thought it would be fine. But yes, we are pushing water uphill.
No, no, no. I mean, in distribution and holding water where it's downhill, getting water to stay and not kill the grass at the top of the hill and flood the grass at the bottom of the hill and, or are we, I mean, it sounds silly, but should we be looking at turf instead of grass?
I don't...
Those bad areas?
That is a storm water retention area, so there is potential to have to grub that out on occasion. I'm not sure that turf, turf's quite expensive. I think we do the best we can to seed it and get some water on it. And it's not going to be ideal because it is still meant to be a storm water area.
I guess I was thinking more up around the playground and the parking area, the pavilion's up in that area. That's, there's some pretty steep hills there now that I see those elevation lines.
I think we'll be okay. We can adjust if we need to as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Fireworks Regulation Code Update. Fire Department staff will be in attendance to discuss proposed updates to the city's current fireworks regulation ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Nick Christensen, Assistant Chief of Public Safety for the Fire Department. I'm here today to present a proposal for changes to be made to Section 1510 of the Pocatello Municipal Code, which contains the fireworks regulations. The regulations work in conjunction with State Fireworks Code and requirements of the International Fire Code. Our goal with these changes is to adapt to the changes in fireworks sales practices and improve language in describing legal and illegal fireworks. Each year, in Pocatello, fireworks sales are allowed from temporary stands for a brief time leading up to the Fourth of July holiday. Due to the high hazard that fireworks can present, these stands are regulated and must apply for a permit through the Fire Department each year. Generally, we have about 12 to 15 applications approved each year. Once approved and set up, each stand will be inspected by the Fire Department prior to opening. These fireworks stands are highly competitive. Many of the proposed changes made are made in an effort to clarify the requirements and improve transparency for everyone and avoid disagreements between vendors. Traditionally, the fireworks stands have been mobile trailers, but in recent years, as I imagine you've noticed, they've, the tents are becoming increasingly popular for those. And currently, that is not addressed in our regulations. The proposed changes to the fireworks regulations address the use of tents according to the requirements of the International Fire Code. Also, there have been changes made to the descriptions of dangerous fireworks and non-arial safe and sane fireworks. These changes simplify and make the descriptions more easily understandable for those reading and seeking to comply with regulations. These updated descriptions will also help those of us that are enforcing those rules. Lastly, we've made some minor wording changes that more accurately reflect how things are currently done. Looking at the document that you each received, there's, there appears to be a lot of change proposed to the ordinance in practical application. The changes are pretty minor and reflect more accurately how we're, we're doing business. I'd be happy to answer any questions again.
Questions? Brent?
So just a general question, but around the Fourth, do we have many fires started by fireworks?
I, I looked at last year, and just in the couple of weeks around the Fourth, we had eight fires started from it. Seven of them were pretty minor, dumpsters and a bush or a grassy area. One involved a structure.
All right.
Rick? The, the ordinance permits fireworks also at New Year's. But there's no, apparently no permitted sales of fireworks prior to that?
There isn't. The state statute allows for sales, I want to say, between the 26th and the 31st. Our, our code does not address sales during that time, and we've never had any applications during that time. Right now, we just allow during the Fourth of July and, or sales during the Fourth of July, but we allow discharge during New Year's.
Follow up on what Brent said. Has there been a fire problem that time of year?
Not to my knowledge. I did not look up the calls, but not to my knowledge. I don't remember anything as a result of...
You know, I, I know the ordinance says no aerial, all that, but it happens all over town. Why aren't we enforcing that better?
We are trying very hard to enforce that. I, I looked that up also, and last year, over the few days around the Fourth of July, dispatch had around 110 to 120 calls for fireworks violations. And between us and the police, we, we go to them. Usually, they're done or they disappear before we get there. You know, it's just a brief, they shoot a couple off, and we go to the neighborhood and start looking around and have difficulty finding them. If we find them, we'll confiscate the fireworks. People, if they're caught red-handed, they're, they're pretty compliant. You know, they, they know they've done something they're not supposed to, and nobody wants to start a fire. We try and do a little education while we're there. But you're right, it's rampant and...
Are citations ever issued? Make an example of someone?
The police will come and issue citations. It's pretty rare, and I think it's reserved for people that are non-compliant or don't want to give up their fireworks.
Oftentimes, a police car will come around there, and the dad will hand the punk to a four-year-old or a five-year-old. He's standing there with this punk, and you cite the four-year-old, and that's kind of the problem is if they don't see who's doing it. it. They can do some education. I've asked that very question. And, and the reality is, is you know who's lighting them and who's not lighting them. But, but you have to see them in order to, to give the, a citation. And, and the poor little kid holding the punk, I, there's not a police officer around that wants to pull an eight-year-old in because he, under a misdemeanor charge.
But he'd never do it again.
Well, he wouldn't, no. And, but, but he didn't do it to start with. It was always the adults. And so that, it's a hard one for us to, to do. I know it's a hard one. When there's a big fire started, everybody knows who was lighting that firework when it started the fire. We had that happen on Bitterroot a few years ago. And, and he got in a lot of trouble for that. And citations were written and things. But other than that, it's, it's tough. It, it would be nice if our neighbors to the north would not sell those fireworks to, to them. But you drive over by Boise, and they sell them in a big thing and.
Year-round.
Year-round. And they say, sign this if you're going to light them off so that you won't light them off in Idaho and.
Of course, you'd drive over to Wyoming.
Yeah, Wyoming does it. And so it's a difficult one for us to do. The, the reality is, is we hope people pay attention to dry weather conditions and, and know that it's going to start fires. And when fires start, it's tough to get there. And if we've got neighbors next to each other, and we've got wild land next to it, that we're going to probably disrupt some pretty bad lives, badly disrupt some lives of people. And so I, I don't know, it's a tough, that's a, that's a tough one. How do you prevent it? Because we all know what happens. We, we know it's going to happen year-round and.
We send our guys out a few nights before the Fourth, and then the Fourth, and maybe the day after, just patrolling all evening. We might have them out until midnight on those nights, just making a presence. But you guys all see the skies, and it, it really doesn't make much of a dent unless we're driving down that road.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
I think I'm beautiful. My dog doesn't like it.
Well, my, my dogs hate him. And I know a lot of dogs that hate him. And stuff. Another one, I mean, we, we talked with Chubbick a few years ago to see if they would emulate the same timeframes that we do. And I think they sell fireworks a week ahead of time or something like that out there. So.
The state total allows from the 23rd of June till the midnight on the Fourth, I believe. Ours is a little more restrictive. We start on the 28th of June.
And so they, they start at the beginning, and they weren't interested in moving their date. And we're pretty comfortable with ours. So. Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you. Then we'll move to agenda item nine, proposed fiscal year, proposed May fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. Finance Department staff will be in attendance to present the council detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2024 May budget amendments for the public hearing to be held on May 16, 2024.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Is it still morning? Yep. Bonnie Schrader, Senior Accountant, Finance Department. I'm presenting the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. This is the second budget amendment request for this current fiscal year. The first one was passed in January. The budget amendment process is similar to the budget process, where a public notice and a hearing are required for the passage of the appropriation ordinance. The proposed amendments were published in the Iowa State Journal on May 8, and will be again on May 15, the day before the council meeting and the public hearing. We have received the budget amendment package and given that out to you and detailing all the requests. And it's also available on the city website. The amendments total $3,307,353 and affect 15 funds. The request consists of reimbursements to the departments for unplanned employee departures, authority for purchases not previously budgeted, and spending authority for new grants and revenue received. Amendments are part of a healthy budget management and are common, common with municipalities. When the city adopts its annual budget, it serves as a financial plan for the upcoming year. However, circumstances may change, leading to the need for budget adjustments. I do have a couple of small changes. On the summary item D, it should read, this is the second opportunity to amend the budget, not the first. And on summary item number 25, it should read WPC Department 863,500 for spending authority. And that is correct in the table and on the public notice. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Do you want me to go through those individually?
I, I think they're in front of everybody. I don't think you necessarily need to go through all of them. But the, the, the correction in the paper was the second, not the first. You, those, those, that was corrected as well?
Yeah, that was just in the summary.
Oh, that's just in the summary? Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
The corrected amount was the, the second item?
863,500. That was correct in the paper.
Counsel, any questions you might have on?
What, this 952 government payout fund, can somebody tell me what that, where that money comes from and exactly what that's used for? I see it listed in very, a lot of these.
So the 952 fund is for the government side. And it is 0.5% of gross salary, I think, that is transferred from every department, and that is budgeted for. And it's transferred into this fund to collect and pay for future unplanned leave expenses, like vacation payouts. And then the other one is 972, which is for the enterprise departments.
Same thing?
Yes. Emergency, police, and fire, they pay a little bit more. They pay 0.8% into it.
So it's 0.5%, not 5%?
0.5%.
Yes. Other questions? Okay. All right, seeing no other questions, unless you want me to wait another second to thumb through that again to double check.
Guys are going easy.
Okay. I think it's all been pretty much outlined for, for people, for us throughout.
Yeah.
You guys do a good job with these packets.
Throughout the year and stuff, so.
We've tried to improve them.
Yeah.
And yeah, a little bit more transparent. So hopefully, it's a little bit easier to understand.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you anticipate a third toward the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, probably around August.
Usually, we do have one in August there. Some grants that we'll receive and some, some other monies that we, some reserves and stuff that we might have to dip into. So. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, man, you got off easy. Then we'll move to agenda item number 10, is the council advisory board updates. This time has been set aside for the mayor and council members to give an update regarding recent advisory board activities. So we'll just start at the end of the row, and we'll, we'll come down. We typically go to seat number one, but you were in seat number one. So we'll go there.
As everybody's aware, I've not been in town the last couple of months. So I've only attended one advisory committee meeting since recently, and that was yesterday. The senior center had their committee meeting. Productive, they're very grateful for what we're trying to do with the sidewalk over there adjacent to the building. They had a severe flooding problem this past winter. With the heavy snowfall, when the Department of Labor plowed their parking lot, they dumped all the snow into our building. And it, it seeped under and flooded the building because the sidewalk tilts toward the building. So all the runoff ran inside. So there's a project over there, going on over there now to replace that sidewalk and tilt it the other way and provide some drainage so that water can get to the street in the future. This has been a persistent problem now for several years, as that sidewalk is settled a bit against. That's a, I believe Tom would call it a building-on-slab. And there's really no, no sealant between, between the building and the slab of concrete it's setting on. So it all runs inside. And they had, they've done a great job over there of painting and cleaning up. They, a lot of organizations have gone in and provided some services, or laid carpet, or, or had employees come in and clean and paint. And it's, it's a very different place than it was a couple of years ago, the last time I was the liaison to that group. Their meal costs, surprisingly, are over $12 a meal that they serve, and their income collected is about $4. So they go in the hole on about $8 on every meal that they serve on there, and are not sure how long, based on their current income, how long they're going to be able to continue to provide that service. It is, there were much higher reimbursement rates during COVID. And now that that's over, their average donation from those who attend is just over a dollar. And they get $3 and something, I don't remember the exact amount, from reimbursement through CCOG for the food services. They are using the food bank now to supply some of their needs, but it only supplements a little bit, because a lot of the things they get aren't readily usable in a senior nutritional menu program that only serves one meal a day. So they, they were very interested in when their turn would come to present to us. Adidas said that they're only asking for the same thing they asked for last year, no increase. But it's, it's a good program over there. They're doing a lot.
It's a, it's a, it's a tough program because it's such a vulnerable population base.
Yes.
We, we spent quite a bit of money there. In comparison, how does the, the city of Chubbick and the Bannock County do? Do they contribute? Are they helping? Are they?
They, they all contribute. I, I saw the books yesterday, and it was the county's contribution and the city. We give them $35,000. That's what we've done in the past. And I think the city of Chubbick does 10, but I don't remember what the county does.
No, the county was talking about reducing theirs.
I don't think they have yet, but they, that may happen.
So, yeah. So, okay. It's a tough population. Thank you.
If you ever get a chance, watch their menu. Go over when they serve chicken fried steak. It's a hell of a meal.
Sounds good. We'll do it. Okay, thank you. Brent?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to report.
Okay. I can, I'll just give you a real quick report on MIAC, because I sit on, I am the liaison for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Our last meeting will be coming up next May, or next May, next Monday. And so we've got, we'll have a little ribbon cutting over, the CRC is where we're putting the free, the food pantry. We did that last year, put a food pantry out here. And these kids have done a really good job building it. And we'll go over there, get it set. The chamber will do a ribbon cutting Monday. I think that's at 5:00? 5:15 is the ribbon cutting. I'd invite everybody to come to that. And, and then the, well, we make sure it's stocked. I would like to say the kids through the summertime come down and double-check it, but that doesn't always happen. We have Ann Nichols and Marlees Erby that step up and do a lot of that. They're the, the advisors for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And they do just an incredible job with those youth. And they're, and they make sure that the food pantries are, are being used and stuff. And if there's ever anything that you'd like to, to donate to that, we've got a little storage back in the back here, and that we have some food items and stuff. I'll tell you, Grocery Outlet has been just absolutely incredible for, for the food pantry there. They, they donate quite a bit of stuff and, which helps. But, but we, we put just about everything out there. And if you go look at it today, it might be just about empty. And you look at it tomorrow, it'll be full again. We, we do have some people that come and put things in there for us, which is kind of nice to have that happen. But it's, that's been a, a big project that they've, they've taken on a couple, for a couple of years, and they've just done a great job with it. So.
So Mayor, if someone wants to donate, do they just bring it here to City Hall?
I would bring, I would, if you'd like to donate, absolutely anybody that would like to, you could just bring it to City Hall. We'll store it back in the back. When that little pantry empties out, we, we fill it back up with different, different things. And, and we'll be doing the same thing over at the rec center after we get a new one put up there. And, and/or people are welcome to just go and put things in the food pantry as well, if they would like to.
You gonna bring a buttermilk pie?
What's that? Am I gonna bring a, oh, no. Well, if he does, I'm gonna go get it. Just when you're gonna put that pie in there, we'll, we'll go from there. So, anyway, that's, that would be my report there. They're doing a lot of good things. Hayden?
Uh, CICA continuing to build houses and do weatherproofing, et cetera. Childcare, last week, lead was a huge chunk of the meeting. And I learned lead is sweet. I did not know that. So kids are especially at risk because they'll lick their fingers, like, if there's lead. It tastes sweet, apparently. So anyways, beware of that.
Can, can I just add a thing to that? I've been working with the childcare group, it's not the committee itself, about the expense and, and stuff with childcare. And so that might be Carrie, I think the board chair is, yes, is in that committee. So you might hear a little bit more about that. But we've been, we've been working with them. We've got our second meeting coming up, so.
Every meeting, always talking about how hard it is to find workers, how hard it is to pay them enough that they want to stay, the turnover, how expensive it is for families. It's, yeah, a lot to deal with. But Parks and Rec, if you haven't been to Pioneer Ridge, and I don't know, is it fully done or almost done? Okay. Yeah, above Highland, near Parks Road, there's a parking lot. We all know about, you know, New Park, pickleball especially. And then the Community Development Block Grant. I've only had one meeting, so I don't really have any update on that.
Okay, super. Thank you. Cory?
The golf committee is meeting regularly. I've missed quite a few of those meetings with other engagements. But every meeting that there, that we do have, there's a lot of talk about the need for a clubhouse. And so that's, keep that on our radar. They're really passionate about that. There's also some other, like lawn issues and stuff like that, getting water and things widely dispersed correctly. But other than that, though, golf is going strong here in Pocatello. The, this second winter that we've had kind of hit hard, and so that delayed some of the golf here. There was a few weeks there that we thought it would be pretty, we'll be out back again. But some of that snow and sleet kind of slowed it down. The housing authority is plugging away. There was some, there were some issues there for a while. They have a new, new executive director who they've just hired. He's come in, got quite a bit of experience. He and the board are working very diligently to correct some issues that were going on there. They have a lot of vouchers that they've, that they're looking to get out there. But trying to find ways to connect to private renters to get more, more of these vouchers out there in the community. Neighbor Works, Pocatello is moving really strong. They're rolling out a ton of new products to help people who aren't able to find normal lending apparatuses, to be able to, to get lending and to get housing. They don't only do home purchases, but they also do rentals. And so they're just looking to exacerbate these resources. Bonneville Commons is moving along very quickly. It's almost complete. There's a lot of work going on there. They have a lot of people who are looking to get into those houses. And they've done a great job there with Mark and the board, really taking the helm of trying to help the housing crisis within our area. the housing crisis within our area.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor. Has Neighbor Works begun discussion of the second phase on South Fifth, that apartment complex?
Oh, that's right.
We've, they've talked about it. I can't really give a definitive answer on what it's looking like right now, but they have, there is some discussion on it and trying to get things underway there. There is the auction house there also, and so just trying to maneuver how to properly get that running and get that going. But, yeah, there has been some discussion.
Okay, good. And Counsel, with regards to golf and the clubhouse, we've had a number of discussions about the clubhouse. As you know, they'll be back asking some more. We're thinking that we need to, to go taller than, make this thing at two layers to do it right, and so we've been looking for financial resources for that, and we believe we've got a pretty good start, but you'll hear about it before anything else to see if we really do have a pretty good start. But we would like to get some real plans drawn up so that we can get some real numbers put together so that we know what we're really dealing with, and, and Ann has been working hard on that, and, and so we're thinking that we're gonna have an expense to draw some plans up of about $50-ish thousand, is that right, Ann? And so you might see that ahead in, in front of you before long so that we can get some real numbers. We, we like to talk about it, and we've got a nice conceptual idea, and, and we throw numbers out there, but we would like to know for sure what we're looking at beforehand, so.
We've got some of the best golf courses in, in this area.
Yeah.
And golf is a big deal, and it's a huge draw for this city, and so whatever we can do to benefit that as an amenity, I think it, it's, it's worth us looking into and trying to do whatever we can to invest into, to golf.
We're looking to, to see that. You'll probably see that, I would see, think sooner than later, but not next, not the next council meeting. So, okay, thank you. Josh?
Arts Council, Friday night art walks have started, first Friday of the month. Go to those, they're incredible. They're so much fun. Live music, food, vendors, really showcases the talent that we have here in Pocatello, so I, I highly recommend going to that. The big update from CCOG, the Brownfield and the Revolving Loan Fund had independent committees, and those have been merged into a singular loan committee that administers both of those funds for CCOG. I sit on that committee, and it is, what an awesome opportunity and resource. If you know, they are for small businesses, they are oftentimes rates that are very comparable to banks or other lending institutions, but for people who have less than ideal credit scores, there's, we don't have minimums on credit, and it, it's an opportunity we've already awarded to loans this year, or in the process of, and, across southeast Idaho, and it's just some really amazing opportunities and a group, and a committee of some very knowledgeable people. I'm learning a lot about lending and loans, and it's, it's, I feel like I jumped into the deep end, but it's an amazing resource. So if you know of businesses that are looking for expansion, looking to purchase a building, looking to get started, all of those things can be applied for, and, and they work with banks and, and other lending institutions, and it's, I think, one of, I mean, see, everything CCOG does is impactful, but I think it's one of the lesser-known things that they can do.
So that one is business-specific?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could piggyback on what Josh just said, last week I attended the Rural Success Summit that was held by the Department of Commerce at Fort Hall. It was a day and a half, and it was really good. It is incredible what is happening in small communities and rural areas across our state. They're, they're experiencing the growth that we're seeing everywhere, and they're managing, and they're making better communities everywhere across this state. It was a, well, if you get a chance to attend that thing next year, I would strongly urge you to go.
That's awesome. Very, very good. Okay, any, anything else? All right, Counsel, thank you for your work on this today. With that, we are adjourned from this meeting.